Okay, well, welcome everybody to this first meeting of the Board of Directors of Harlan Community School District, first one for 2022 and many of us new board members. The first thing is we call the meeting to an order and determine that there is a court, but Monte is the only one that's absent tonight, he's sick, so I guess we will trek on here. The first thing I've been asked to do is to read this B, in accordance with policy 213, Public Participation in Board Meetings, the Board recognizes the importance of citizen participation in school district matters. In order to assure citizens are heard and board meetings are conducted efficiently in an organized manner, the Board has set aside this specific time for public comment. I've learned that there is a lot of pressure on school boards and a lot of people have been very gracious and said, "Well, congratulations on being on the Board." If anybody has said anything, it's about this paragraph here and folks around here say, "We are in the public, but we are not a public or a town hall meeting." And so, we want to be very transparent and we want to have people come when they need to. If I see people on the street, you know, the first thing I'll say is, "Did you talk to the teacher?" Or maybe the other, once in a while, "Did you talk to a principal or maybe a superintendent?" But occasionally, somebody will want to come before us and it's very important, you know, distributive justice is attained when we give everybody the right to vote, but there's also procedural justice. And many studies have shown that people are more apt to accept distributive justice as if you give them procedural justice. And so, it's a please and thank you goes a long way. And I know many of us have been to a public place where it's a little fiefdom and you get put down a little bit by the person across the desk and that's not what we want in an environment where people know that they're welcome to come and when it's appropriate. So, that's what the second part of it says. And part of the situation is that we are constrained by the agenda and so because of that agenda, we need 24 hours. So, it's not that we're trying to put people off by not discussing it, but it's just the fact that we need to get it on the agenda so that we can maybe discuss it the next week need be and we need people to know that, that we're not putting them off, we're just doing things in the proper way. So, procedure is very important, transparency is very important. Any comments about that? What do you think, Greg?
I agree.
Okay, the first item of business is the approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Several.
Okay, and the second? Okay, and any discussion on the approval for the agenda? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Nay? Okay, so the agenda is approved. The second item, first item of business, I guess, is D, Discussion Items, and so at this time, I'll turn the floor to Superintendent Barnett.
Thank you. Well, we will, first of all, I just want to introduce, so Mr. Froelich is on about three different duties tonight. Mr. Mueller was ill today, so we're running lots of things, but if he goes with stand up and these are, this is half of our foreign exchange student population, and then there's three more, and so I think one will be all the day you said and you're waiting on a couple, maybe? So, did Mr. Froelich tell you what he'd like you to talk about?
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, so do you want to start?
Yeah, so I'm Tatjana, I'm 17 years old, I'm from Germany and I'm living with the Sardines and this is Pete.
Oh, I'm Rosa, I'm also 17 years old and I'm also from Germany and I'm staying with the Huslins, you know who that?
Mm-hmm. Good.
Okay, I'm Alex, yeah, I'm from Mexico, I'm 16 years old and I'm staying with the Shmien.
Which one?
Sheri. Yeah, with Sheri and Jav Shmien.
Okay. And what's one thing you like about Harlan so far?
School spirit. Um, yeah, the people are very nice, more taco, you can better talk to them.
Yeah, I like the games and like going, like football games were really exciting.
Because we're so good.
How about one more question for you? What's different from here in your country that's cool?
School is way easier.
Way easier?
They have a lot of more tests here than they have in Germany, law for my part.
Yeah, I think like here, it's also like you can choose your classes, like Mexico, you have just your classes and you can choose anything else.
So, are you taking junior class or you consider juniors or seniors?
Juniors.
Juniors, and then when you go back to your home country, you will, will you go back where you started or will you advance a year?
No, I, at least I don't get credit for this year.
Okay.
If I would have gone last year, I would get credit, but it's a little bit difficult because there's like a system behind it and that's why I don't get credit for this year. I think it depends on just what kind of school you go and what grade you're in.
Okay. How about you?
Um, I'm already done with school in Germany.
Okay.
Um, but if I want to go, like there are more options to school, so if I want to go continue going to school, then they make me repeat the year.
Repeat it.
Oh, I did, I take the credit from this year, I don't need to repeat this year.
Okay. So, if you want to introduce yourself?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry for being late, I'm Tolga, Tolga seven, I'm from Turkey. Uh, I'm here for my whole junior year and, uh, yeah, I came here at the beginning of the year and I'm going to be here until like May, basically until the school ends. And yeah, I don't know what.
Who are your hosts?
My host parents are Franny and Donnie Loder. Uh, Franny, my host mom, used to be also foreign exchange student at Denison, that's why she came to Iowa and yeah.
And then maybe what's one thing that you like about Harlan and one thing that's different from your home country?
Uh, one thing I like about Harlan is like, uh, you know, when you seen the movies, like gives up a pretty cool country vibe, if you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've seen snow a lot since I came here, which is really different because in Turkey, at least my city, it's really warm, so like I got to see snow once, I was like 12, so the cold is something very different for me.
Are the extracurricular things like sports, they're not, are they part of your school day over there or not?
No.
They're not at all?
We have more clubs than school sport. We do have teams, but they're not a big thing because, for example, I live in a big city and people are just not interested in being involved in school because we just have so many things out of school. So, I think no one's just, no one's interested in staying at school and, I don't know, watching the basketball games.
What is your school day? From what time does it start and end?
It's very different, so you either have six hours a day, eight hours or 10 hours.
10 hours.
Mm-hmm. So, it goes from 8:00 to 1:30 or from 8:00 to 3:50 or from 8:00 to 5:10. But you have kind of study halls in between, so when you, from 10th grade to 12th grade, you have open campus the whole time. So, if you have like two hours off, you can just go wherever you want.
And what kind of occupations do your parents work in?
What's that?
Uh, my dad is on real estate business and my mom used to be an accountant and she retired a couple of years ago.
Um, my mom is kind of like a day nanny, daycare, well, she has her, it's like her own business and my dad, he's a carpenter or project leader, I don't know, something like that.
My parents are father. Uh, my dad works in a bank and my mom doesn't work.
Back in the 1990s, Sandy and I had a foreign exchange student and their parents came to visit and we visited them and they, we still get a letter from them every year, just a couple of weeks ago. Ramdi Ritter is his name from the other. We have an awesome bunch of exchange students and we have two that are not here, it's Finn, Finn is one.
Nazma.
He's from Netherlands and he's staying with the Hylesen family and then we have Nasia.
Nazima.
Nazima. We'll butcher that one.
So.
We've had a good time, it's been lots of fun and they bring a lot to the school, so.
Where was that one from, the one that?
Nasia.
Nazima, she's from Kurdistan.
She's staying?
And staying with?
Um, I just know Lori, that's her host mom.
Oh, well, that's okay, sorry.
Mind if I ask a question?
Yeah, in Erling.
What's that?
We're just, yeah.
I was older, so I'm supposed to talk.
I don't know.
She's actually, isn't she? That's what she shared.
Oh, yeah, she's from Pakistan, it's like a country, like it's where you can talk, you usually know, and there's like the engagement, like all engagement.
Like her friends arrange it, one of them arrange.
No, what's the biggest difference in your country compared to the United States?
Food.
Better or worse?
Worse.
I'm so, like unhealthy. The catch up here is so much sweeter and everything is just so much more unhealthy.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, I think it's not like worse, but it's kind of really different, it's not kind of different, it's like really different compared to my country. I mean, but I prefer my own food, yeah, but it's not that bad.
Oh, I was just going to ask, what part of Turkey are you from?
Uh, I'm from like the, wait, how do I say it, like southwest side?
But Cheshmei, you know?
Uh, yeah, Cheshmei, from Izmir.
Yeah.
In there?
Three times.
Oh.
Yeah.
What do you have on Turkey, application?
My sister had a foreign exchange student from Turkey years ago and she actually stayed in the United States and my sister and brother officially adopt, were her legal guardians and so, um, anyway, they have a hotel with Cheshmei, so.
We graduated together.
Oh, CM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Same class. That's a really Turkish name.
I think somebody told me about her, I don't know who it was, but some of the teachers, it was like 2005 and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I live really close to Cheshmei, it's not like same city, but it's like Omaha in like this place, like one hour away, so you can just get a drive here.
Interesting, small world.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming and are you going out for game now or you got, yes, yes.
Joe is wondering like, "Get on, we had a lunch the other day and I feel like their ribs are the target."
Yeah.
I can find Finn, Finn is very outgoing, he's got a chance to meet Finn, he's quite a guy. He saw, he let him come to school. He doesn't answer texts right now.
Well, thank you for introducing yourself. Welcome.
Bye, bye. Nice to meet you all.
Good night, guys.
All right, Jeff.
Um, I don't know how many pictures I shared with you, but every year, this is one of my favorite things because every year, the second grade is doing economics math unit and so what they have to do is they have to design what their product is going to be and then they have to market it, they have to mark a price on it and then they use fake money and the classes take turns buying from each other. So, the whole lunchroom is filled with kids, as you can see kind of in the background and I think there's two or three.
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to get billed.
No, oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, and some of it's products and some of it's services, yep. This is the first time I remember services of doing this, but they.
Which one, I'm sorry?
I'm trying to think, the top one.
No, the top one?
I had that done, I can't remember, I think they were doing Mohawks, yeah, she was, they were doing Mohawks. Um, I think it cost $4 for a Mohawk.
Ooh.
Um, so that was kind of cute. There was, um, there was massages, where people brought massage.
My son was one of them.
Yeah, and then, but you only had so much money to spend, so you had to shop and then you had to budget and so, and then afterward, they would, you know, go back and debrief what they thought. Some people sold out right away, so they learned about if their product was something somebody would want or not, you know, and some people didn't sell out right away, so they had to talk about why their product sold or didn't sell and the kids have a blast, of course, so, and they just made different products and learned about economics and spending money and trading and goods and services and there's a lot of things that go into something like that, you know, a lot of life lessons as well, so.
Did they get to spend the money that they got in? You know, did they recirculate the?
I don't know what they do with the money that they get in.
They got to buy different things.
Okay.
You mean like the businesses in?
Yes.
Okay.
Like my son came home with some glitter rocks and, oh yeah, there was stuff they could buy.
Yeah, yep.
That's cool.
So, yeah, so then they, I know I brought, bought, because they gave me $10, so I went shopping and I got a Mohawk, a massage and a rock.
Did you get a picture?
I did not get a picture.
That would have been good up there. Yeah.
Well, my hair was really short when they did my Mohawk, so you can't really tell I got a Mohawk, so.
You did. Kind of grew black.
Yep, it grew back. I have to hide my bald spots, so. So, it, that's one of the best, if you just, the environment in there is just really cool, you know, so, yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, so like I said, Mr. Mueller's not here, but I have, okay, so this is second quarter, he's got second quarter students of the month and then. That's the next page, yeah, that's the next page. Okay, so there's, they, each core teacher nominates a student based off of working hard, being a good classmate, class participation and character. And then the other pictures are pictures from Family Consumer Science class and science when they're studying solar system, so there's probably looking at the sun from the earth there in the solar system and then here's a project in Family Consumer Science. And then we've got Smile Face Tricks, so he said that vocabulary work in social studies and Smiley Face Tricks writing strategies, hyperbole, alliteration, personification, figurative language in communicated, in communication class. Did he say what Bing Friday is?
I think it's bingo.
Oh. I saw that. I didn't know either when he said that to me. Earlier on the computer, I was like, "What's Bing Friday?"
I was trying to identify.
Oh, it does look like.
It's twin bings.
Yeah, maybe that's what you win. We'll have to, yeah, we'll have to ask. That's probably like a whole seventh grader or eighth grade class in there.
If you looked at them, I'd pick a turn.
And then, um, oh, there's the students of the quarter, I showed you this. And then here's the foreign exchange students, like Mr. Froelich said, they have lunch, so that must be Finn and then the other. Do I need to butcher it? Yes, I don't want to say it either. It is really cool to have six foreign exchange students, is, for this size of a school is a really neat thing, so. Okay, and then the next thing, Catherine ran off the board meeting schedule, which you have in front of you, so we have a couple things. Well, first of all, Joe said.
Yeah, 5:00 will work, if you guys want to go.
Want to start at 5:00?
It's kind of close, but I can do it.
Okay, so that's something you guys might want to change, you want to change it to 5:00. And then second of all, that highlighted piece there, Monday, April 18th, is actually the spring break, so we don't have kids that Friday and Monday. So, I didn't, we just didn't know if you wanted to change that or we could change it to Tuesday, the 18th, we could change it.
19th.
I'm sorry, the 19th or the following Monday, the 25th. We were thinking not go earlier, Brian, because of those or?
Well, yeah, and here's the other thing, on the March one, we might have to be a little flexible because that is when we approve the budget because it's going to be too late in April, so we might have to be flexible on that depending on when we hear about SSA and stuff. I think this day will work, I'm pretty sure, but, but we could, on the 18th, we could go a little bit earlier, just not a whole lot.
So, not a whole week earlier?
A whole week would be really tough.
So, it'd be better to do it on Tuesday, the 19th or Monday, the 25th? You cannot, okay.
Should be a council.
Okay. Okay. Does it, is there a conflict if we, does it matter if we have it without school? No, I just don't know, like, we might not have principals and other people here, so you know, but otherwise, it doesn't matter. Okay.
I mean, if the 11th is the only thing, I'll just make it work somehow.
I just didn't know. When is Easter?
See, the 11th pushes it back to the.
I was just going to say it's not.
You push it, you can put it on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Friday before.
What, when?
The 17th.
17th. It's Easter, oh, that's why there's.
So, it's Easter.
Yeah, it's not Easter, right? For me.
So, probably suggested the 19th.
If it works for most of them, I'll make the 11th work, we'll just.
But what about Wednesday? Push it back to Wednesday, that's never going to bother me.
Is that okay?
5:15, if someone does have a jury going evening, they should still be up there.
Okay, are you saying Wednesday, the 13th grade or Wednesday, 20?
No, go later, is that why it's easier?
Perfect.
The 20th, okay. Okay. I'll send you, I'll revise this and send it to you.
Should we adjust the 5:15 to 5:12? That's totally up to you guys.
I like the 5:15.
I hate the time either.
Get off of 5:00.
Yeah, works perfect.
Gives me time to not, sometimes I'll be in work attire anyway, but some times I can change.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the action items, so the next item of business is the personnel report. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the personnel report?
I would make that motion. He's in the packet, so we had a chance to locate it.
Do we ever have questions about it to be asked, or? You can, or you can ask before, whatever you would like. I didn't have any questions, I just didn't know if there was ever anything we wanted to know.
And a second on that?
Yeah.
Motion, okay, now we can discuss it if anyone wants to look at it, but if you click the link, I think it's up.
I got it up there.
Yeah, on board now, these are the items that are on the personnel report.
So, this is just a little bit of a change from prior to make it more of a summary for you because before, each contract was linked, which made the board packet very lengthy, but most of the contracts, like associate contracts are pretty much written verbatim besides the information that you're going to get here with their salaries, so if you want to see their contract, you absolutely can come see it, but we just thought this, this just kind of summarizes it for everybody. And then we didn't hire anyone this, this month, but when we do, those will be listed as a, as a category. Is it regular to have this many resignation? That was my question, I guess, is it regular to have this many resignations? Some of them are effective for next year, which is helpful for us because then we can look, we've got two associates that are going to retire at the end of the year and another one that, like Julian Baron, retiring too. We put resignation under all of it, but, so yeah, we're reaching a point where some people are retiring. And like I said before, in board report, it's, or board minutes, it's difficult to keep at the salary that we have, so we're just. Any luck on rehires, replacement for these or? We had a new one start today, but not, we didn't get her in time to put her in here. We've got a few applications, so we're just continuing to interview and.
Are we losing ground on staff?
Um, I don't think we're losing ground, I think we're being more efficient on the associate side of things, so who, do we need to replace some and if not, you know, we will look at that first and not replace.
Would you like to scroll up to the bottom there? Those are the ones you're particularly working on.
Yes, yes.
It was helpful when you went through those.
You'll take those through now?
Well, yeah.
So, the vacancies, the classified vacancies are, are any coaches or associates, we actually are full in the nutrition services, which is for the first time, that's good for us. The classified ones are the certified, I'm sorry, on the bottom are the teachers, so we are starting, trying to start that early, so socio-emotional learning consultant or guidance counselor at the elementary level, we, I think we have a pool that we will choose someone from, but it'll probably be internal, which will create another hole or another opening. High school art is, is hard, so we're, we're still advertising for that, plus we have a plan, should we not be able to find someone to, to work on that. Secondary instructional coach and the elementary instructional coach have to come from internal based on teacher leadership compensation plan, so that will create two additional openings. Talented and gifted, we have interviewed for that and we, I think we have a good candidate for that. Is that necessary, doesn't have to come from within, does it? No, it doesn't. Okay. Um, elementary special ed teacher, we have some candidates for that, both internal and external, which we're very happy about, which even if we would take an internal and put it to Jeff, maybe one of those externals could come, take the place of the other, so that's another hard one to find, but we, as well as middle school math, which I think we have several applicants for that, which we were worried about that too. So, I think that will be good, I think we'll have that filled pretty soon. And middle school language arts is another one that's pretty wide open right now, which I was a little bit surprised that we didn't have as many applicants for that, because usually you have more for that than math position. And then the anticipated elementary teacher was just for the elementary, we knew we would have an elementary opening from the coach because it had to be internal, so we just put that in there to see who's, but. So, we will have a new list, hopefully we'll have hires.
I imagine Catherine's background in personnel helps also in this business.
A little bit.
Yeah, good. Well, you're ready for a motion or vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is the policy review schedule and I believe there's no say that here that Al and Jade and Greg reviewed those and maybe made a few comments, should we have a motion to approve the policy review schedule?
Are we doing this, separating of the, that's a separate options?
Can.
I would think that, seems like that would make sense.
We're, we're approving the second reading of the 100 policies.
100 policies, okay.
Right.
Second reading, okay. Pointing that out.
That would make that motion.
Okay. And the second for that.
So.
Joe and Andy, discussion on comments that were made on that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next item is the approval of the school, the approval of the, what's that?
The first reading for the.
Okay, so now we're here for first reading, okay, so now we will make a motion for the first reading.
Of the 200 policies.
Okay, of the.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Have you had any discussion on them?
Oh, discussion, okay, discussion, discussion.
I'd just like to say that being on that, on that review committee, a couple of years ago when we were doing these, or I think we made a lot of progress in the whole C manual and so this was really, it's, it's a pretty clean document now, so it was really not a lot of questions on these things and it's, it's well done, I think, I think we've been pretty good solid policy.
Yeah, we cleaned that up pretty good, I think it's pretty cut and dry.
Okay, where are we at here? Vote on it? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? All right, the next item of business is number four, the approval, of the approval of School Budget Review Committee Request for Funding Related to FY22 Statewide Volunteer Preschool Program Increased Enrollment Amount of $80, excuse me, $61,429.50. Can I see, do you want me to talk on this one?
Yeah.
This is something new and it's, it's actually a one-time thing too. And last legislative section, session, the General Assembly granted authority to the SBRC to award funding to districts that experienced an increase.
to award funding to districts that experienced an increase in, um, um, voluntary preschool program enrollment, which if, I printed out the list and I think it's just about every school because some kids stayed home. It, this, there was a lot of that went on. So what essentially, it's, it's a one-time thing that they're allowing districts to have to help with their preschool program. Our is $61,429. And essentially what we're using it is, is some of it for lost learning. We actually have some preschool equipment that will probably going to get updated.
So does that money have to stay for preschool?
Yes.
Your tag for that?
Yeah.
If it's lost learning, does it get to come out of that additional COVID funds?
Well, and actually what, what's kind of nice is, is we can pull that funds off towards this and we can use that for something else.
So these are real dollars, not authority?
These are real dollars. Actually, I'm not calling it. You actually, adults approve these when they have a meeting February 15th. And once they're approved, then you have the op, you spend the money, it's like any federal program. You spend the money and then you file for reimbursement. That's with any federal program. So that, and we'll know soon enough that we'll be able to, it's all gonna happen in this year, so. But we've got it all mapped out for our grant.
One of the things about preschool is you only get, um, funding for half a child. So you, you know, like normally you get around $7,000 for every child you have. Preschool, you only get half, whether you, whether they go half day or full day or anything. So a lot of times preschool is underfunded, so I think they're trying to help.
And our numbers are up.
And it's so much per child, obviously. Is that how they, is that how they calculate it?
No.
No?
They did.
Joni? They need to give a whole lot of information.
Oh, okay.
They gave us the mountain. Do we need a motion on this? Someone like to make the motion for item number four? I won't read it again, if somebody wants me to.
I'll make a motion to it.
I'll second it. Tell me if you read it though.
Okay, all, any more discussion on it? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The next item of business is the consent agenda. So could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I, I had a question before. Do we have to, you know?
Usually you put the motion on the table before you discuss it?
How about the consent agenda?
Okay, you got a second on that?
Second.
Okay, so do you want to discuss the consent agenda?
Yeah, I just have a question. Um, the Denova, how do you say that?
Denova.
Denova?
Progress payment, that you guys had approved that contract.
Okay, that was my next question. Are they, is it monthly or?
They do, it's progress payment. They, they, they put in a lot of upfront time, so this is, I think, not really, Joni.
Okay, yeah, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't remember how the payments to, to that company was.
It will never be exactly even.
It won't be the same.
It's, they, they do what they call progress payment, so if they're, they feel like their ex number done with their job, then they'll.
Okay, so it'll fluctuate on a monthly basis?
Yeah, and they may only bill us two or three times too.
Okay, all right. That was my own question. I just wanted to know how that payment plan is structured.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't see anything concerning.
Can I question me about that committee or does it have to be about these minutes or any particular? I'm just on this, the Denovo committee, like, how did we get outside people? Did they just say, I want to be a part of it now or?
Um, we, so that's just the core committee and then we're gonna involve lots others as we go. So we internally just tried to figure out people who had come to us and said, I want to help you with facilities. So, um, and, and we had to keep that somewhat small. And then once that, once we meet tomorrow night, Wednesday, Wednesday, then they're each gonna kind of be tasked, I think, with getting a group of more people out. So we will get lots of people involved. We just had to start with the core.
Because they, they will be tasked with who's they?
Um, the core team. So the core team that we, so we got. Well, the committee, yes, the committee.
Patrick describes it, it's kind of like an octopus. You don't want to have 80 people on the core committee because there's, you, you can't consolidate the ideas enough. So what you do is you start with the core committee and then each core committee has people underneath them, which then it branches out.
And we also try to be aware of all the communities outside of Ireland too, so people from smaller, you know, I don't know. We were, there was a thought process in there, but if we missed someone on the core committee that should have been on there, we definitely need to know and get them on that outside committee too. The other thing of it was is, um, we're doing a portrait of a graduate too, so then we were like, who, we don't want to overtask, tax people and ask them to be on too much either, so we, we have a different word for that.
In that part of it, what is the committee that's handling that?
The which one?
The portrait of a graduate.
So that is, um, I haven't sent that out yet. I didn't want to get things confused.
Trying to leave my desk.
No, that's right, because I didn't want to get things too confused. And I'm gonna send that out after the, like, probably Thursday morning to see who wants to be involved in that. That's a little bit bigger visioning session, um, and that's only, that's pretty short-lived. So once a month through February, March, April, May, and then they'll present to you what, what they want the portrait of the graduate to look like. And be, and not be done, but that's kind of our vision moving forward, whereas Denovo is a little bit bigger.
And that's sort of an ad hoc committee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as the, the facilities committee, has that been established then, the core committee?
I can't tell you right off the top of my head who's all on that, but I can, yeah.
I can't say either, unless you and I can, who else is on that?
Well, I know.
The facilities. Some of us last week, or last month, I'm on it.
And that's different than the buildings and grounds committee. We were great.
Right. We, we asked, yes, who would be interested. So if you're interested from a board's perspective, absolutely can be on there, so let me know.
Just a different topic on the, uh, point of procedures on the consent agenda. There's, we vote on that as a block, but anybody on the board who wishes something pulled out of that and separate, they can ask for that at any point before we do that and we can work that separate, just so everyone knows.
Thanks, Joe. That's a good point. Any further discussion? Okay, then we have a vote on, if all those in favor, the consent agenda, approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
No, say no. Okay, the vote we carried and the consent agenda is approved. And the last item on the.
Can we go back to one, can we back up on, just had a question, uh, policy review question. So do we have next meeting will be the second reading on these and it'll be first reading on the next series, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing.
That'll be the, that'll be the, the committee that'll be looking at that will be the people signed for the February.
Yep, so Joni, Monty and Al.
And that's the second half of the 200?
I'll send them to you.
Right, the last half of 200. It's hard to 200.
It's on this three-year policy, it's, uh, it's part of this 200. Yeah, we're still in 200.
Yes.
Okay. I got half the 200 all the way through.
Yeah, no, I knew that, I knew that.
You should have most of them.
Well, I went through.
Just to clarity, thank you.
It is helpful to read them though. I've learned a lot of things, so.
Yeah, just because you're not on the committee app doesn't, like, I was on the committee and I went through and read them all.
Yep.
It's just that the committee can interact back and forth as a non-core of committee.
But it stays on, that's just if you ask a dumb question. I was also afraid of like, ooh, this might be dumb. Then it stays on there and a couple, a couple terms from now that we're like, okay, vote her on.
I'm here to try editing it and we had some difficulty with that until Al came in, told you can do it that way too.
Oh. Nope, I need to do that. I just made my little note on the side. No. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you for putting up with my learning curve and would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Financial.
Oh, we do? Okay. Still on that. Okay, I missed you, okay. How about a motion to approve the financial reports? You don't, so.
So do you, any changes?
Second on that?
Oh, who's in?
Yeah, I thought it was.
It was.
I thought it was.
Oh, yeah, it's under D, so it's hilarious. Sorry, I thought it was separate because it was on second page.
I need to.
Okay, Joe's gonna be needing a juror. Is it second on that?
Wait, are we, Jur, is it German?
Yes.
Who was the first?
Joe.
Joe.
That was the first. I was second. Okay, we have motion on people to adjourn.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
I said I. I thought you had talked, Brian. I thought so.
You're up, Brian.